...our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the holy water of which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll please.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven eyes.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to bring up an issue other than items that are on the agenda this evening that can't stick around for the whole meeting but would like to bring to our attention? Somebody, is it me breathing into it or is it somebody else breathing into it? All right. So there's no one in the audience that wants to address that. Let's move on to the next item, the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of June 18th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll please.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All the minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
I've got a mini novel tonight, so bear with me here. Most of the aldermen, I believe, received a communication from Mr. Gabanski. I think that's in your ward, Alderman Clistic, about the pets and ordinances and what can be. We received a communication from Stan Nemec on 7100 block of Hudson praising again municipal services about the tree trimming on the parkways. And he really said that he sees where our tax dollars go and was very impressed about how we work. So that was nice to hear. Chief, this one may come at you. Melinda Novak in Brookhaven Shopping Center is having problems with people coming in solicitors. You know, I've told her if it's, you know, she went and printed out the ordinance and she got the applications. So I guess as people are coming into her shop, she's handing them the application to go get a solicitor. But I told her, the ones there, if they get boisterous, where they're just to pick up the phone and call 911. And that's the best thing to do on those cases.
Absolutely.
Received communication from Anita Kwasny on 1500 block of Shelley that we passed around to a few of us regarding parking. Right now, there's parking restrictions Monday through Friday, 12 to 8 around, as a matter of fact, I think it might even be, you know, seven days a week, 12 to 8 around the Eisenhower Ball Field. Danny, you want to put some history on to that?
Sure. And again, with the three cul-de-sacs involved, Shelley Court and Carroll Court, and they both have restrictions along with Park Avenue. In this particular case, the resident there has concerns about not being able to park, especially during the day. I think one of her most recent examples was she had a landscaper that was doing work at her house and she couldn't park in the street. So that was just one example. And then they forgot the car was in the street one afternoon and the police department obviously had put a ticket on it. You know, with that said, one of the recommendations was for her to maybe put a petition together to see if there's an opportunity for other suggestions, whether it's hours being reduced, signs being pulled out, or even potentially permit parking. So there was a little, keep in mind, about two years ago, we went through a similar thing around Hinsdale South with the parking. While that was a little bit different, the street was a lot narrower, so we can't really compare apples for apples. But she was going to go and try to put up a petition together and submit it back to myself, which will submit back to the city council to see if they want to move forward.
Okay, so she has not, she has not come forward with her petition?
Correct, correct.
And we actually don't know, I mean, Joe, you want to keep, Alderman Kenny, you want to keep on top of it, but be sure she gets it to us. And at that point, when we receive it, then we'll probably send it to committee for discussion.
I did visit her and, you know, had a conversation in respect to the petition. And she should get all her neighbors up and down the blocks. Everyone should have some type of opinion and agreement.
We have, we have beaten that issue to death.
Correct.
On the parking around the ball fields there. And I don't think we want to change any of that.
Well, the one thing, though, I would, if you were going to change anything on it, right now, the ordinance or the signs are showing 12 o'clock until 8:00, okay? There's not any baseball games going on between 12 and 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I'd be happy if, you know, I wouldn't be, have a problem if the parking restriction was just when the games are going. So if you were going to say 4 to 8:00. But they have no parking for 12 to 4, from 12 to 4:00. It's nothing going on, I think.
It's the weekends, I think the weekends too, especially during tournament times, for example, that we have to, you know, have probably two sets of, two sets of hours. And again, that was one of, that was one of the recommendations. I also had informed her about, you know, take a look at permitting, for example, with placards, forgets, reduced hours, pulling out the signs altogether. There's not an easy solution. Park Avenue is its own animal, if you want to say, because you could see a safety concern there if a ball is hit into the roadway, kids dodging between vehicles or cars, parked cars. Whereas in the cul-de-sacs, they're remote. It's a very remote, but the overflow parking potential is still there.
Okay, so we'll wait till something is presented to us to tackle the issue. Did you have other issues?
I have one last one, Mayor. Ralph Ladato, 71st Street, 1500 block of 71st Street. He had a concern about the progress on 71st Streets.
Putting the, putting the hump back in.
Putting the speed hump back in and how long it was going to take to get the street totally clear. And he gave me two phone calls on that, so.
The street, the hump is going in Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
You're not saying which one's there, right?
Any other communications to share by the alderman? Okay, I could have taken one of the, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Clistic.
No, no problem. This is the Alderman Kenny mentioned. We did receive communication from Mr. Gabanski. He was just iterating that he wanted to make sure the city has proper ordinances for pets. And Mr. Manning did review that. So we do have ordinances that your dog has to be on a leash, they have to be properly tagged, and have their AB shots and whatnot per year. So those ordinances are already in place.
And you just remind me, I did have one more that came across social media. It was right before the 4th of July parade on my Aldermatic page. I put out looking for walkers and I got a response from somebody that had no idea where they're from. And they wanted to crosswalk across 75th Street to those from behind Jewel Food Store so they can get to their Starbucks and get their coffee a little easier. And I was talking to Brian. I'm like, I was not going to say it. And Brian goes, he goes, you know, you always give every communication, you can't stop now, so.
We did look at a bridge years ago.
We were, yeah.
Supply.
Oh, wouldn't that be fun?
Right into the Starbucks counter window.
Did you want me to note that for budget, Alderman MacIver?
That would be a Saturday night live routine, I thought, I could see.
That's it, I'm done.
Okay. Any other communications to share? Okay, let's move on to the mayor's report. And I'm taking the liberty to introduce Nancy Urban who is here this evening. Nancy approached myself regarding an arts council, creating an arts council in the city of Darien. She mentioned that Bowling Brook has one and she would like to do something similar. But I'd like to invite Nancy Urban up to speak to the issue. Okay, you might have to move that microphone down, Nancy.
Can you see me?
Yes, yes we can.
Just a little tiny background on me. I've been living in Darien for 20 years. I raised my daughter here. I have 23, 25 students that come to my home for voice and piano lessons. I've been teaching at the Darien Park District for, it's 13 years, Musical Theater Workshop. I've seen about 500 kids come through my classes. I did Glee Club there, acting as well. I also work for the special needs program, C-SPAR, and I do music therapy for them, Glee Club, voice lessons, vocal coaching more like. But, and during the summer, I do some camps at Burr Ridge Acting, Musical Theater, Glee Club. So I have been in this community, working in this community for 20 years. A few of my students go to Bowling Brook to their really wonderful program, BroadwayAfterSchool.org. And I've enjoyed seeing them in it. And I've never really taken a look at their program, look at their program. There's a Bowling Brook Arts Council. And then it starts, I start to think, we've got Darien kids going to Bowling Brook? Their parents are dropping them off at rehearsal and saying, hey, I think I'm just going to Starbucks and get a coffee, or while I'm out, I'll get some gas, or I'll go to Walmart, too, in Bowling Brook. We've got all that in Darien, all of that in Darien. So why can't we keep them here? So I thought, oh, you know, we need a Darien Arts Council. Put out a few feelers. Said, okay, yeah, they're all interested in it and everything. So talked to Mayor Weaver and Brian Vanna. And they, I, they thought it was a good idea. I thought it was a good idea. So I put together a little bit of a bid on it to see what we could do. I looked around. There were other, other cities that had arts councils, kids theater, looking mainly to help the kids, 6 to 14. I've got a few of them here. A couple of them would like to actually speak to you. Which leads me to what I have been doing, Darien Park District. I have been there for 13 years. I weathered the economic impact that we have where everything was kind of pretty bad there for a while. There was one time I did not run one of my classes, and that was because my father passed away. So I was, I'm saying, musical theater ran approximately 32, 39 times. Glee Club has run about 32 times. And the acting classes run about 28 times. Unfortunately, Thursday, I heard that my class is not going to be accommodated there anymore because they have signed on with a soccer league, indoor soccer league. My class, classes, with the exception of the piano classes there, was the only music and theater in Darien for the children. Darien does a fantastic job with sports. They really do. But they don't do, we don't do a great job for the arts here. The Darien Arts Council, it's a classic example of why we need a Darien Arts Council. I, my class will be running through the fall, but through the fall, after the fall, I am done at the Darien Park District. 13 years at a park district. You would think there would be more music and theater there, and there's not. There's a lot of sports, a lot of exercising, which is necessary, but we need a balance, too. We need a balance in our community. We can't just be about sports. We've got to be about a balance. Music, theater, always proven to be helpful to the kids. If it's okay, I'd like a couple of them to talk to you real quick.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Who's first, Cass? Cassie is how old? Cassie is 10. She's been with me for three years. She also goes to Bowling Brook to go to the Bowling Brook, the Broadway After School dot org.
Unfortunately, we do not have a step stool.
Is that all we can do?
Or do we?
We use a table and she can speak at the table here. It's a vertically challenged table.
Okay.
Right there.
Nice move, Dan.
Good evening. I'm going into 5th grade at Laye School, and I've been Miss Nancy's student for almost three years. She has helped me gain confidence and helped me speak better in front of crowds. In fact, without the experiences I've had in musical theater performances and voice and pianos recitals, I wouldn't be able to talk in front of you today. I fell in love with performing and wanted to go further. However, I had to look outside of Darien. Having more support for the arts will encourage creativity and add beauty to our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, maybe we can move the microphone back.
My name is Zoe. I am 14 years old, and I'm going to be a freshman at Hinsdale South. I've been a student of Miss Nancy for, what did you say, like 10 years? 10 years? So almost my whole life. And I've lived in Darien for pretty much my entire life. And this, this camp is really the only one of its kind, and I'm really sad that it's going away. And it's kind of helped me with my confidence. And I was, like, when I was little, I was like really shy and quiet. And now I'm kind of not, no, no. And when I was little, I was kind of like crazy. I have ADHD, so this has helped me with my focus. And I think that it would help other kids with this. And it'll also help with social skills because I did the musical, Once Upon a Match, at Eisenhower. And I made a lot of friends there, and we all felt like one big family. So I think it'll help kids who don't really have friends make friends. And it can be, it can help them learn life skills, like you don't always get what you want. And really, it's just, it'll help them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one.
I think there's another person, I think you have another person in the audience, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, Sam.
Yeah, okay.
I'm Ally. I am going into 6th grade at Eisenhower Junior High, and I've been a student for Miss Nancy's.
I've known her since she was in Carrier.
Carrier. And I'm sad that the musical theater program is going away at, what's it called?
Park District.
Park District. And I feel like music just helps me express myself, and it's soothing. It helps me calm down, and it helps me focus on now, not the future, not the past. Helps me be happy, and it makes me feel good.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha Heinking, and I'm a sophomore at Hinsdale South. I have known Miss Nancy since I was about five or six. I'm almost 15, so most of my life. My parents signed me up for her acting classes and musical theater classes and Glee classes. And from these classes, I've learned like how to memorize lines and gain appreciation for music and the arts. And although I'm not currently in musical theater right now, my love of music has led me to learn piano. I will be taking advanced piano in high school this upcoming year. And it was also, I was also able to help Miss Nancy with choreography and music with younger students also in her classes, which that helped me become a peer leader at Hinsdale South, leading other students and the upcoming freshmen into the school. Lastly, I believe that becoming involved with music helps you also with classes, like my honors classes. I thought that memorization helped me with like my English class. In conclusion, the selection of Miss Nancy to start an arts council in Darien would be amazing decision, and it would really help the children in Darien.
Thank you all, thank you all for speaking.
I didn't write those for them. So what do we really want? What do I want, is pretty much what you're probably asking. One of the hardest things about having a program like this, having an arts council, is obviously funding. Okay, I'm not asking you for money. We're probably pretty good about fundraising ourselves. We just need, one of the hardest things about having a group that would want to do anything remotely like this. I'm looking at something like a children's musical in the fall, a children's play in the spring, and a children's musical in the summer. Nothing too huge. In these flyers, I will give you, it gives the prices and it costs it all out. You know, we have to pay rights, you have to have costumes, you have to have the technical end of lights, props, sets, everything like that. I have, my schooling, one of my degrees is, I have a musical theater degree, and my minor was in stage management. My other bachelor's degree was in music therapy with a minor in child psychology, and my master's is in music education and theater. I'm pretty well versed with everything that goes on within the theater. I was required to stage manage. I was required to do lighting. When I got out of school, I did go to New York City. I did some stage management. I did one Broadway show and decided I didn't like it anymore. And said, ah, it's not for me. After about 20 years of being in the business, I said, I don't think I want to be on Broadway. It was hard, it was long, and it was very competitive. So I went home to Syracuse, New York, where I was born and raised, and met my husband, and then ended up here. Lots happened in that, those few years, but I ended up here, and I've been here for 20 years. All of the stuff that goes into making an arts council, which would in turn help us get the theater for the kids, is, it's not easy. You need dedicated people. I'm looking for the businesses to help us. I'm looking for support from the community, in kind, places to rehearse, places to put, the place to put our performances on. It's difficult when you don't have a community behind you to say, hey, we need a place to rehearse. Could we rehearse there? And it's always, well, yeah, sure, but it's $40 a night. And if you rehearse twice a week, $40 a night is just not feasible, you know? That was originally why I went to the Park District and started the Musical Theater Workshop. I need, we need, let me find the needs list. I had the needs list. We need that, that sort of thing. We need just the support of the community, businesses helping us out, maybe finding a business sponsor, helping us with places to have a Darien Arts Council meeting, places to have our rehearsals. Each one of the schools conquered Cass, Eisenhower, Elizabethide?
Yeah.
Lakeview. I think even Laye's, Hinsdale South has a nice little theater. They all have stages, and they're all workable stages. It wouldn't be a huge leap to use one of those areas. We need to set up our council, and we need to get, get it going to where we say, okay, we're going to fundraise. This is what we're going to do, plan the year out, see how it goes. Okay. But we cannot do that without the support of the community around us. Again, I know the businesses support sports and support all of that kind of stuff. And I, I'm just hoping that they will see the value in supporting music and theater as well. I have written up something. I would like to get the word out there and have one of our first meeting for a Darien Arts Council. Ideally, we'd like to get a couple sponsors, and then maybe tap into the businesses for printing needs, or set needs, or, you know, costume needs. We have a wonderful senior citizen community here that would be awesome to volunteer. I, I know that they would want to do something like this to help out the community. They're always looking for some things to do, and, you know, there's a lot of value there. I have a couple of volunteers at C-SPAR who are retired. And they're volunteering at C-SPAR at my Glee Club, just to volunteer. So I'm thinking that would be something that could happen as well.
Nancy, when we met, we talked about the possibility of developing a list of contacts, for sure. All of these schools, all of those community organizations that you identified, we identified to put on this list to approach with your idea of a Darien Arts Council. And I think that would be a very good start. Now you've just brought in the idea of soliciting businesses, too. I hadn't even, we hadn't even discussed that and thought about that when we met. But don't you think we should, we should get the ball rolling for sure and create a communications to all the community organizations with your idea? And especially with the schools, as you said, most of the schools have stages and facilities that could be the place for your plays and musicals. So we could, we'll definitely start there. Between you and Brian, between the three of us, did we develop that list already?
I gave him some suggestions.
Okay.
I emailed it to him.
Okay.
Yeah. My fear with the schools is that they're going to think somehow that we're encroaching on their musical stuff there. I have run into that occasionally with the musical theater classes, where the schools and what they're doing, it's some, some sort of competitive thing. Not all of them, just a couple of them. And I don't want that to happen. I want us to support it all. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Not just say, hey, we're going to take your kids.
Any of your council members have questions?
I think what you really need to do when you start talking, the schools are critical because they have the stages, but you have a lot of community organizations within the city of Darien that might be looking to support this in one way or another. You've got the president of the Lions Club sitting right over here. And that's something that maybe they could look at in terms of supporting it financially. You've got a women's club. You've got a lot of groups that may see this as a project they want to undertake. As Mayor Weaver knows, we have a gentleman who owns the Burr Ridge Fred Astaire Studios who comes into our community and does fundraisers at Hinsdale South. And he's very much into what goes on in this community from a fine arts perspective. So there's a lot of groups out there. I mean, I would, I would add.
We could add Mike to the list of contacts.
I think on the list that I sent, Brian, I had the Lions Club, and I did have the Darien Women's Club on there.
Good, good. Okay. Well, and the fact that you're here this evening, and this will be, you know, this will be televised over and over again until our next city council meeting, is good, because more people will hear about it. And Nancy, you'll be sure to leave your, your phone number and contact information with us so that we could send it out to individuals who do express an interest.
Okay.
Nancy, I did 10 years of community theater. I've taken voice lessons. I can't draw out Lady of Mount Carmel. I've probably got a better than average voice. And you've just got your first $500 sponsorship from my, from my real estate office today.
Thank you. Thank you.
As a movie said, from Jerry Maguire, you had me at hello.
Thank you, thank you.
Alderman MacIver.
So I just looked up Bowling Brook Arts Council. So it looks like it's a commission under the government of Bowling Brook, like one of their, you know, commission groups, along with Civic and Cultural Affairs, Historic Preservation. But then there's another link for bowlingbrookartscouncil.org. So I'm kind of confused as to like.
I think they're the same. I did the same thing because I didn't know they were there. And I believe they're actually tied in a little bit with the Park District. Anne?
Yes.
Do you know anything about them?
I do. So I just know that there's Theater on the Hill operates under the Arts Council for Bowling Brook. Then they developed BroadwayAfterSchool.org, which was a very brand new thing when my daughter did Annie, so that was two years ago.
Okay.
That was, it's the same company, but it's just for children under, so it's all under the same umbrella. It's Theater on the Hill, but BroadwayAfterSchool.org is just the children's portion, which is, I think, 3rd grade through 16th.
They provide some kind of guidance with a commission? I'm guessing, like, commissions you would, the mayor points.
Well, I, when Nancy and I first got together, when Brian, Nancy and I got together, I was not envisioning it to become a commission of the city council, of the city.
I just, that's what I saw here from Bowling Brook.
That's not what I was envisioning, but certainly that can change, you know? I don't know.
Yeah.
How does, do Bowling Brook get most of their sponsorship and funding? And is it run through the city of Bowling Brook, or just some general?
You know what?
I'd be curious.
We need you on the microphone so it's televised, yes.
Hello, I'm Anne. I'm sorry, I'm chewing gum. In any case, how we got sponsorship over at Bowling Brook is parents. So it's actually asked and somewhat required of parents when they're putting their kids into these theater groups. They're asked to go knock on the doors of all the community, you know, stores and businesses at Bowling Brook. And we do it as parents. And we, we never have an issue. We would love to do the same thing for her, for Darien, you know, support these kids, support Darien. But it's all on volunteer basis.
That's, that's what I envisioned, yeah.
Yep. And, and parents never have a problem getting the ads for the kids.
Okay.
Well, and there's a fee that you pay for them to be in it as well.
Businesses have to pay.
Well, you have to have your kids in it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We have to pay $250 to be in, into the theater program. And that'll cover, you know, the voice and the practices, somewhat of the costumes. Some of it is still parent obligation, out of pocket, maybe 20 bucks on top of it. And then you buy your tickets. And then, you know, how Bowling Brook does it is, you know, Michael, the director over there, he keeps some of the money, and I think it all just keeps rolling back into the theater program.
Thank you, thank you. So what, go ahead, Alderman.
One more question. So aside from the city's involvement, did you give this a similar presentation to the Park District Board as well?
No. The Darien Park District. They, when they restructured, I was with them when they were at the one on Plainfield. And when they bought the other one, they restructured a lot of different things. And one of the restructuring that went on was with how they paid people. I have talked to that board one time, and it didn't go well, so I've avoided talking to them. And it's, it's been a difficult thing with them. It's been great to be there. I wouldn't have gotten any of these guys.
It is disappointing to hear that they're dropping the arts program there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely worth. Yeah, it's definitely worth reaching back out to them and saying, hey, listen, this-
They're a critical component to like space and, you know-
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
At least availability for practicing and things like that.
Right, right.
And they have-
So we can't, we cannot cross them off the list, Nancy. We have to, we have to keep them on the list.
To be fair, they've, they've had changes in, you know, board members as well.
Right.
I think it's only fair to give them an opportunity to hear the same presentation that we heard as well.
Nancy, we can't, we, that's, that's a thought, really. We need to, we need to pursue that. Or, you know, to, you know, you'll have to take a big swallow and, and-
As a Darien resident, you do pay taxes to them.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, they've got a great facility over there. They really do.
There's a lot of nice people on there.
Are you on there, is it you?
Do you know why he said that?
Are you on that board?
His wife is on the board, yes.
Oh, it's one of the two females on that board, okay.
He'll just happen to mention this Arts Council issue to her. Nancy, let's, yeah, Brian's out of town on vacation right now, so we'll, um, we'll pick up on getting the word out to all these different organizations on, on your, on your plans. And, and I'd like you to be involved with creating that letter.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, great.
And then, as you said, we, we could approach all the businesses in town too. We'll get the chamber involved.
Okay. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Nancy, thank you and thank you all for coming out. Okay, moving on to the next item under the mayor's report, which I am taking liberties with again, is we, we received a letter from the Darien Lions Club regarding our ability to, to put up a storage shed somewhere in the city of Darien for all of their, their supplies that they, they use on an ongoing basis. Alderman, I asked Alderman Macays before the meeting started if he would just give us a brief summary of what they're looking for. And I'd like to turn to you, Alderman Macays, to give us that brief-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a real brief history. For many years, the Darien Lions Club kept all of their supplies, materials at the Darien Park, Park District Sportsplex upstairs. And the facility served a purpose for a while. But at the same time, we outgrew it. Right now, we only keep our, our, I believe, our Halloween materials there because we do a Halloween party at the Sportsplex. The other materials that we had to look for a storage facility, and a couple of years ago, we actually talked to Dan and the city about the use of this facility over here on Manning Road and Plainfield. And that proved to be something we really couldn't do because Dan needed that for storage. About a month or so ago, when we approved three storage sheds to be placed on that property, Dan and I discussed the possibility of the Darien Lions Club purchasing a fourth shed of the same size and then placing it on that property. Went back to the Board of Directors of the Darien Lions Club. They said, let's get the particulars down. You know, access, things like that. So I drafted a letter. Line President Ken Conkey approved that letter. I sent it to Brian Vanna and copied it to Dan a couple of weeks ago. I met with Dan and Brian to find out that they were considering other options for us. One possibility, what would, one possibility was still the corner of Manning and Plainfield. If you look at those three sheds, the way they're situated, you really couldn't put a fourth one there. Dan had Chris Thromb look at it and Chris said if we moved them, we could possibly put a fourth one there. The other option would be poss, the possibility of using this garage that's on this property over here or the Lions Club buying a, a, a storage facility similar to those and putting it on this property here. So that was something that Dan and Brian discussed and I was part of that discussion. The question and, and what the council really needs to discuss is if the Lions Club, Lions Club has no problem purchasing the storage shed. And Dan indicated the city would have no problem putting the storage shed up. The question is, does the city wanna lease property to an organization? And I told Brian, I said, what we really need to do is have the council discuss how they wanna deal with this. Does the council wanna be in the business of allowing a community group to place a facility on city property? And if they do, are they gonna be charging a lease rate? How much would they charge? So we thought maybe it might be something you wanna get the council's input on.
I do, yeah. I, I'll let Dan speak to, to the locations and then I will, I will ask for, for your, the council's comments.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. One of the thought processes, as Alderman Macays had said, on Manning Road and Plainfield Road was to get an identical shed, which would be backed up to one of the sheds over there. That is a former water plant, you know, is, there would be a lot premises there. So that's really the extent of it. The other portion that we, Brian and I had discussed prior to Joe coming in was the space right over here at the City Hall. Our thought was that, okay, the Lions Clubs have various functions throughout the year. Twenty-four hour availability would be more so available at the City Hall, especially with lighting, for example. So our thought process was to look at the existing garage that's currently in place. While that garage does need some remodeling, my thought process on it was to see if there's an opportunity for that garage basically to be raised and a new garage put in its place. That space would then accommodate the opportunity for the storage needs of the city as well as potentially the Lions Club. As Alderman Macays said, one of the discussions that Brian and I had were other organizations, other organizations such as the Women's Club. Again, we don't know what type of supplies they have or if they even need any type of storage at all. But the garage, let's say, would be approximately, and again, this is just a off the cuff figure of six hundred square feet, let's say. And if that's six hundred square feet, maybe the Lions Club only needs three fifty or four hundred. The city needs two hundred, for example. The rest may be, may have an opportunity for other organizations. Again, we like the idea of having it here at the City Hall, just for simple reasons. Twenty-four hour access, it's well lit. So from a security issue, it's, it's a lot more practical.
The, the issue would be that the garage that's, you, you can see it, you know, when you're on, on the property, is in bad shape. And Dan's feeling is that it needs to be torn down. And, and in, in the process of rebuilding it, we could expand the, 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 the base and make it a larger garage so that it would accommodate the Lions Club materials and the materials that we save over there for our police department and actually for our, you know, salt-
City grounds, correct.
City grounds too, all the things we need. So, you know, all of those, all, all of those thoughts are out there right now. Your thoughts, I mean, do you, do, do you as a city council feel that we should entertain something like this?
First, I'm sorry, first question, how bad is the garage right now that's there?
It's, uh, it's from nineteen sixties. The ceiling is, it's a lower ceiling. The wood in there is start, some of the wood is rotted, the siding, the, the garage does have to be recited. So by the time it's all said and done, you know, that there's opportunities financially, whether it's donations from the Lions Club, whatever the case is, to look at something like this.
What are we storing there right now?
Yeah, he's, he's anticipating like a ten thousand dollar expense to take it down and rebuild.
Provide, it's not brick, for example. So there's different cost options as well. But that will be, probably be the most economical.
Just for reference, the sheds that we purchased as a city were seven thousand dollars. And the Lions Club was prepared to spend seven thousand dollars to purchase one of those sheds. What you should know is that right now, we're paying over, we're paying about thirty-seven hundred dollars a year right now to store our other materials at the safeguard over there on Lamont Road. And from a return on investment standpoint, you spend seven thousand dollars on a storage shed and you've gotten that, your money, you're saving money after that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it, it costs so much for, and, and I'm gonna add this because I think it's critical. You know, we give a lot of money out to the community. We just gave sixteen thousand dollars to nineteen different organizations in the community in the month of June. And when you spend three to four thousand dollars a year just on storage, that's money that could be going to a community organization. So we like to, we like to work with the city on this. I, Ken's here, maybe Ken wants to say something.
Alderman Shower, do you wanna comment?
So what are we start, going back to the garage, what are we storing in there right now?
Currently salt for the winter, approximately two pallets, two full pallets we'll have for the winter. There's the police department's-
Car seats.
Car seats, yes. When the police cars get retrofitted with the cages, all the car seats are stored in there until those cars are gotten rid of and the seats are put back in there. There's miscellaneous things, there's bikes and bicycles. The police department does seize bikes. They do utilize that for that as well. Some miscellaneous tools that are utilized for strictly to village, uh, the City Hall.
How much room does that take up?
Right now, it's about two hundred square feet.
Out of the six hundred that's in there?
Correct.
Okay. And, and what are we looking that you're gonna be needing through?
We probably need, what do we have now, Ken? Do you know what we have over there?
The, the storage facilities?
Yeah.
I don't know the exact size of all the rooms, but I would imagine about three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty square feet you use up right now?
Do you have enough room at three fifty?
I have yet personally been to the shed, but from what I understand from our lines, it is a little bit.
Okay, so this is a multifaceted issue here. I, I've only heard from, from Alderman Shower so far. Other, other Alderman's thoughts on pursuing this?
I, there's a, a very big similarity to when the VFW was at the Old Heritage Center and they, we were giving them, we were leasing of space out for free, which VFW's a non-for-profit, Lions Club's a non-for-profit. Both entities give a significant amount of time and resources back to the community. So I don't have, I don't have a problem there at all. We are talking about having maybe possible a theater council here in the, in the future that might need space, you know, to store, you know, costumes or, or sets or something or along those lines. So I, it, as long as it, the, the six hundred square foot garage that we're using is we can find other places. I, it doesn't sound like it would be that hard to relocate the stuff that's being used in that garage currently.
Temporarily, I mean-
I mean, while we rebuild it?
Right, while we rebuild, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, well, we, and again, that's really the minimus in the grand scheme of things, whether it's getting some type of storage trailer for a month, month and a half. Yeah, that's, that's the minimus.
Alderman MacGyver, your thoughts?
Um, you know, conceptually, I, I don't have a problem with it other than, you know, obviously concerns about liability. And then if you have multiple, you know, access, you know, groups having access in there. We're storing city property there as well. So like just kinda the logistics. And then I don't think we budgeted for the ten thousand dollar garage for this year. You know, those are my main concerns. I mean, as far as other organizations go, I mean, you can, I don't know. I think you can work through that probably.
Yeah.
So I, I, conceptually, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, Alderman Klisick?
I'd be fine. It seems like you have quite a bit of room to make it quite a bit bigger too, just looking at the area of view. You can double and triple the size as well. So I'm just saying is, if we build a small shed and all of a sudden, five years later, it's not enough, you know, whether make one shed that'll maybe accommodate two organizations plus the city. Maybe divide it up similar to what they do in storage spaces and say, if you're a community organization and, and, you know, we support you, we can say you can have this storage, a second, a third one is for, for us. So I'm just putting that out there.
Our needs are probably the smallest.
Alderman Vaughn, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Our needs are probably the smallest for the application utilized for the City Hall.
Alderman Vaughn, your thoughts?
I'm totally comfortable with it. Everything that these guys said, I agree with.
Yeah, Alderman Belzak, I don't, I'm not meaning to over, overlook you, but you're a Lions Club-
I am a member of the Lions Club, so.
Yes, you have a, you have a vested interest in this discussion, yes.
I do think it's a win-win for both the city and the Lions Club. And as Alderman Macays was saying, we're talking about rebuilding the garage. The Lions Club is willing and able to contribute to rebuilding that garage.
Okay, I'd like to send this to a committee for further discussion on this. Or do we, do we need to even do that at this point?
Probably, at least for admin finance.
Yeah, just for, just for deciding whether we wanna use the, the plant over on Manning Road.
Just put the logistics into-
Or, or do something with the shed, the garage over here.
Yeah, what we could do is get preliminary costs. And again, as Alderman MacGyver had mentioned, it is not in the budget for this year. But then again, you know, if the numbers are, it's economically feasible for the Lions Club, again, we'll, we'll have a preliminary figure in which could be looked at at the same time.
Okay, how quickly would you be able to do that?
Within two weeks.
Like you have nothing else to do, I'm sure.
Within two weeks, yeah. We, we should be able to get at least a preliminary figure for a garage, yeah.
I'd like to refer it to the Administrative Finance Committee, yeah.
I'd just like to know from the Lions Club, how many square feet they really need, you know, so.
The question I was gonna ask next is if we got a six hundred square foot garage there, do we need a bigger footprint possibly for an eight hundred foot? Just asking a question.
Well, I think he was thinking of building it larger anyway.
Right, well, it was larger. I think the max we could go per zoning would be eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty square feet for an accessory structure. So let's, uh, we'll take a look at the code. Obviously for variations, the variation could be looked at as well. There's really nothing impeding it based on the land that's available.
Alderman Shower, are you thinking about putting in on, on the admin finance for, for August sixth?
Yes.
Yeah, we could throw it on there, yeah.
I'll be, I will not be at that meeting, but I will give you my thoughts or something prior, okay?
Yeah, let's, let's shoot for that. That's two weeks from now, August sixth.
Okay.
We can shoot for that.
And then Joe or somebody?
I think Ken and I could both attend, but I think Ken needs to be there.
I just wanna make sure what the square footage that you guys are seeking is-
I, I have been to the storage facility there and I'm guessing, I think it's twenty by twelve, which is two hundred and forty square feet, so.
It's crowded.
And, and it's full, or it's eighty-five to ninety percent full right now.
Okay. So bigger is better. Okay, so this is, this will be referred to the Administrative Finance Committee. Hopefully, everything will be ready for the August sixth meeting. So, okay, let's move on, I think. Okay, so let's move to the city clerk's report.
No report this evening, Madam Mayor.
And since we don't have a city administrator, are you stepping in, Mr. Gombeck, and have any report?
I could if you'd like. Administrator Gombeck has no one.
That's classy.
Okay, let's, well, you're gonna get a chance to speak again. Let's move to department head reports. Chief Thomas?
Just real quick about National Night Out. It's, uh, thirty-fifth year. We've only done it last year and then this year will be the second year for it. It's scheduled for August seventh at Darien Community Park from six to nine P.M. Promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. It's, uh, we had a nice event last year with hundreds of people coming out. And most of everybody here came out. So it was a nice event and probably gonna be pretty close to a duplicate event.
And there's gonna be prizes?
Prizes, games, all kinds of fun things.
Yep, all sorts of stuff. Okay, so we'll get the word out.
Public Works is gonna join in.
Everyone in the audience, don't, now make note of it, August seventh, National Night Out over at Darien Community Park. I'll be looking for all of you to be there.
Public Works will join them also this year.
That's right, they're gonna do the Touch a Truck. Yeah, they're gonna do that.
Touch a truck.
See, look at the excitement now, there we go.
Um, Municipal Services, Alderman, Alderman, listen to me. Dan, do you want any comments?
Sure, just real quick, Alderman Klisick had asked me from the last city council, a little update on construction projects throughout town. Right now, we're at about a sixty percent mark. Sixty percent mark meaning that the roadways, majority of the roads are all paved, with the exception of Speed Hump, which is going in in about three more months on a Wednesday, we've determined that. In conjunction with that, the Speed Hump will be going in this Wednesday. And then we have some patchings to do too also, complete through town. The concrete program, the curb and gutter has all been replaced. We have sidewalk. We'll be going through the neighborhoods, starting the sidewalk in about a month. In conjunction with that, we also have several drainage projects. Right now, we've got eight projects on the docket. Four of them have been completed. Again, the, the rain has slowed these guys down. We're under budget and the majority of the drainage projects at this point. So I know that Alderman MacGyver had one concern and the last one we were gonna initiate on Tamarack. We just initiated that via letter. There is funding that is available and that's why we also inform the city council that we will be forwarding a letter to the residents if there was funding available. So we're in good shape in that respect. Carpeting, excuse me, the tile for the city floor here is coming in the twenty-third. That's been on back orders, so that's why when you look at the City Hall here, the council chambers, you see it somewhat in disarray. The back wall will be painted also. We're waiting for flooring to make sure that we have the color sequences correctly. As far as other projects, Rolling Knolls has recently been closed. We're in the process of closing that out. When I say closing that out, that means where the Public Works, Engineering Departments and basically the wetland people all walk through there, look at the reports. And this is probably one of the fastest subdivisions in my career that I have been a part of to be able to close out. So it's been, it's amazing how those homes all, uh, sold there. So it's been, it's amazing how those homes all sold there. In conjunction with retail, there's no other news in retail at this point. The corner of Plainfield and Cass Avenue has somewhat dried up at this point. We are looking at entertaining another opportunity here that Alderman Marques had mentioned to me. So that'll be up and coming. We'll see what happens in that respect. Other than that, if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Anyone, questions for Dan? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Let's move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181905, the amount of $794,514.14 in payroll for the period ended June 21st and the amount of $241,189.44 for a total to be approved of $1,035,703.58.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions for the treasurer? Then the roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clisstick?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. The next warrant, please.
The next warrant, warrant number 181906, and the amount of $1,902,449.13 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended July 5th and the amount of $258,633.24 for a total to be approved of $2,161,082.37.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions for the treasurer? Then the roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clisstick?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move to standard committee reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Municipal Services Committee is meeting next Monday, July 23rd, 2016, here in the council chambers at 6:30.
Okay, Alderman MacGyver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee will be Monday, August 20th, at 6:00 PM at the Police Department Training Room across the parking lot, pending agenda items.
Okay, and Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The July admin finance meeting was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. And our next admin finance meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 6th, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, yes, Treasurer Corn, you have a meeting, yes.
Our quarterly meeting, our quarterly police pension fund meeting will be on August 2nd at 7:00 PM. I believe it's going to be in the upstairs conference room. This one's a little bit more important in that we should have the actuarial report for the coming fiscal year being presented. Early indications are the contribution will be up approximately $100,000. I invite the finance committee, again, I invited you last year, I passed it on to Alderman Shower. Again, any residents that are interested, the actuary that calculates it should be at that meeting also. And we will also have a follow-up meeting at the city council, but that'll be our first exposure to it.
I know, Alderman Shower will be there.
What was the date again?
Asking questions.
August 2nd, 7:00 PM.
Just love those actuarial reports.
Okay, okay, he's watching those actuarial figures, I'll tell you.
And I'll be there to settle them down. I'll be.
I'll tell you. Yeah, we know that, it's a given, that our contribution keeps going up.
That's right.
Yes, okay. Let's move to questions, comments, and agenda related. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments on any of the items that are on our agenda this evening? And let's move to old business. And there being no old business, I'll move right to the consent agenda. We have one, two, three, four, five items, and I'll read all of them so that you know what we're voting on this evening. The first item is a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license requirement for Our Lady of Peace Home and School Association. Both are Class B licenses, one for calendar school year and then Class B for annual events. The next item is a motion granting a waiver of the raffle license requirement for the Darien Lions Club. Well, you're having a split the pot, did I hear?
It would be a split the pot at the Darien Day in the Park.
Okay, okay. The next item is a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day for the Class J temporary liquor license for the Darien Lions Club for.
Same event.
At the same event. What date is that?
That's Sunday, August 5th.
Okay. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from Allied Door, Inc., to remove the existing overhead door, modify header, and install a new garage door and controller at our Public Works Water Plant located at 1930 Manning Road, at a cost not to exceed $10,618.16. The next item is a motion authorizing the purchase of a three-year licensing agreement for payroll scheduling software from Pace Systems. And we're using our Department of Justice award money in an amount of $7,650. These are the items that we're voting on in our consent agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman MacGyver. The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clisstick?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All the items have been approved. Let's move to the only item under new business. It's a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title 6B, Street Division of the Darien City Code to add a new Chapter 7 Regulation of Small Wireless Facilities. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. You may not all be aware, but we have a work session before our city council meetings in which we all are able to ask all sorts of questions. That's why during the consent agenda, no, not a lot of questions were asked because we discussed most of those. The item under new business is a little different. It has generated a lot of discussion. And the issue is that, thanks to the state legislature, they passed a law that is, that is binding our hands to create a new code on allowing small wireless facilities to be put up throughout our community. And we have this amendment, we have to have it passed by August 1st. And I don't know if anybody wants to add anything else to the discussion, but it's troubling to all of us that we are being rushed to vote on something or approve something by August 1st, that we have lots of questions on and wonder how it's going to be, how it's going to work. And, and so, and how it's going to affect our wireless contracts now that we have for the facilities on our water tower. So anyone else wanted to add to that discussion? Did everybody understand that the ordinance after they read it this evening?
Yeah, I read some of it in the Municipal League Magazine, that if you don't pass the ordinance, you're not able to charge any fees later, correct?
Yeah.
So this is saying you either pay now or forever and hold your peace, correct? Sort of like the cigarette tax.
Exactly, exactly. And it's a case where, do we have any authority? Because the major streets in Darien are the county and the state. And are we going to have any authority whatsoever? Although, as we discussed in our work session, our light poles are on these roadways. So are we going to have any authority at all if we're approached and be able to have fees and whatnot?
It does stipulate, though, that if you, if you control the right of way, you have the right to charge in order to govern that, even though it's the county's road. We do control that right of way with, because our lights are on the right of way.
We don't control the road. We have our light poles on the road.
Through an agreement, we have the right to have the light poles, but we don't have control.
So we have no, we don't maintain any of those right of ways at all.
No.
And if the county would be the one that would be administering any fees, because it's their roadway.
That's the catch 22. And this is something we're going to have to, you know, contact the county with. And as we spoke at the pre-workshop session, there may be IGAs that may have to be amended. Again, you know, just because the county has the right of way, Cass Avenue, for example, we have all those decorative light poles. The decorative light poles, a carrier under this provision has the opportunity to come in and put in an antenna of some sort. With that said, whether or not the city gets to collect a fee and/or has any say over the permitting process is yet to be seen. Again, the county controls and owns the right of way. We have the IGA agreement to house those light poles on there at our expense.
Could these antennas, as you said, for lack of a better term, be used in a residential? So if there was a neighborhood that had.
No.
You couldn't put them there.
No. It can be in an industrial. The zoning for it can be within an industrial, commercial application, and/or along a major thorough, I believe it was major thoroughfare. If I double check, see what the language was specifically written as.
All of our major thoroughfares are county or.
Right, that's why I ask, that's why I ask.
I mean, 75th, Cass, Plainfield Road, or all?
Yeah.
It's a new animal for all of us. And again, you know, there's going to be questions that are going to come up. So, you know, hopefully, there's going to be some type of case scenarios that are going to be coming out here pretty soon.
We even have the, we even have the township involved in our roadways with Claring Hills Road.
That's, we have control that because under annexation agreements, whatever, whatever is annexed, for example, Claring Hills Road, whatever is annexed falls into that city's jurisdiction from one side of the right of way to the other by default. So, and we're fortunate in that respect, Mayor.
This is not the first time we've been forced to have a vote. I mean, during the concealed carry, the Capitol a couple of years ago, and they put the assault weapon ban, we had, we had, what, 10 days? We had 10 days to put, you know, put something together.
That's right. Or else forever lose your ability, yeah. Yep.
Same thing with the gaming.
Thanks to the state legislature.
And the gaming as well was similar to this.
Yeah, the gaming was the same thing.
That's right, the state, they control, they control the rules and regulations on that. We just get to say yes or no.
Cell phone licensing fee, is what Dad would say.
Sorry?
Have a licensing fee in order to have a cell phone in the area. I don't know, that's.
Well, there is. Dad, you do have fees in here. The fees are built in. And whether or not, the real question is, and as Mike Corn brought it up earlier, we currently have towers, whether it's water towers and/or actual cell towers that are on Frontage Road. Are those towers going to be going away? That's a significant revenue that's produced for the city of Darien.
Okay, so I guess we still have to have a vote on this, whether we hold our nose and vote on this, okay.
We have a first and a second.
Yeah, the roll, are you, yeah, go ahead, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Clisstick?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has been approved. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements. I'd like to certainly make a comment. Thanks to the Lions Club for a very successful, warm, successful Fourth of July parade. And to Nikki Belzak, who took lots of photos and they're on our website, Channel 6, you know, for reviewing. She took lots of pictures of all the different organizations that were in the parade. And I thank her for the great picture she took of my family. So, other comments? Alderman Marques?
Two things. As I mentioned earlier, and the audience is here, August 5th at the Darien Community Park between 1:00 and 9:00, Darien Lions Club will be running an event called Darien Day in the Park. We do this in conjunction with the Darien Park District. They're going to have a musical group there that night that'll play between, I believe, 6:00 and 9:00 PM. During the day, we offer face painting, we offer bouncy houses, we have food, beverages, and all kinds of other games. So those of you who are interested and they want to come out for that, again, Sunday, August 5th, that's actually just two days before Chief Thomas and the National Night Out. The other thing I'm going to ask of the council, Darien Lions, the money that is raised with this Darien Day in the Park goes to the Darien Lions Club Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). I was asked by Andrew Brunson, who is our president-elect, to ask the council if council members would be willing to sponsor something at the Darien Day in the Park. The bouncy house are going to cost us $200 to rent those for the day. And he called me the other day and said, would you be willing to ask the council members if they all wanted to chip in and be the sponsors and have their name on that, on our banner as a sponsor for the bouncy house?
I don't know if we can as a council. I don't know if we can do it.
Individually, I mean, if they want to do it individually. And again, it's, I believe the money goes into the foundation, and so it's a tax deduction for you. If there's 10 of us, that would be $20 apiece.